Stay on board after she resigned her trustee's position here at the end of July. And having checked on it, we're allowed to have a resident, as it were, assuming he's not a trustee or fire chief or something on the board. So I would like to reappoint her to the board for one more year, based on her past experience on that board.
If we have to put these people on board, there's nothing preventing us later to expand the board. Do you want to put more people on there? I don't know. Is there?
Okay. Number of people on the board is set by statute. I'm open to that. Would somebody move regarding the [inaudible 00:01:51]. I'll make them up for you. By trustee David, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by trustee Whittemore Burke, thank you. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you chair the ayes have it? The motion carries. The reappointment is open solely to the E9111 Board for the term ending June 13, 2014. Will somebody make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Lee Walsh. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Second by trustee David. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you chair the ayes have it? The motion carries. Reappointment of fire chief Kevin Dole to the E9111 Board for the term ending June 13, 2014.
Who makes the motion?
Moved by trustee Shaw. Second by trustee Lee Walsh. Any discussion? There are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you chair the ayes have it? The motion carries. Okay. That takes us down to the listed agenda items. First one, the village street repair program. This is one I had talked about, started talking about in April and postponed, kicked over from May in light of the new, you know, of trustees coming on, coming on the board and having a background. But basically, this isn't a final plan that I'm asking any, for any vote on, that we're going to accomplish something along that line tonight, but I wanted to start the discussion and hopefully we'll need to, something substantive with respect to the street repair program. I think we've had discussions for several years now about the status of the streets in town, and I don't think there's widespread disagreement as to whether or not streets in general need repair and maintenance in the village. And we have not had a street program since the late 1990s. In fact, former President Jake is here, and during his tenure, there was a referendum for a street bond. That passed. People agreed to pay more property tax, and with the bond money, the streets were paid. And during President Jake's term, and when he left office, the streets weren't in great shape. People had just agreed to raise the money and pay tax to pay it back. And we spent the next, I think, thirteen, fourteen years paying that bond issue off. And that was paid off. It was the last December date?
I think it was last year.
It was the year. Okay. So anyway, but now we're down the pipe, that many more years, and there were streets, you know, the trail being one where I lived, that wasn't included in that street bond because it had been done five, six years earlier, and really, quite frankly, didn't need it at that time. I'm aware, completely aware, as I hear from people in Ashbrook about their streets. Those streets had just come on. That was a new development at the time, the street program. So in any event, as I had said previously, I did take a visual survey of all the streets in town with our village engineer. Some streets need some major work, others need some catching in spots and perhaps repair work on curbs and shoulders. But in general, there's a need for a street program in the village. And so what I would like us to do is to go forward and create a plan in order to accomplish and repair paving of the streets. The plan would, as I envision it, and this is, you know, my proposal, and that's why we're here to talk about it, is to have our village engineer identify streets that need the work, what type of work they need, how much it will cost to accomplish that work. Once we have that information, and the village board with our resident input can decide what streets, or as many streets as we feel is appropriate at that time, to actually go forward and repave and/or repair. Be extended to work, as I understand, some cases, there can be different options as to what be done, because we just basically, in the end, we probably know better, take off the, like, an inch off the top and repave it and it'll look nice and, you know, look good for a number of years. Some streets need to go a little bit deeper, others need totally rebuilt. So, you know, we can, we can make that collective decision in formulating the plan as to the extent of the work that we would like to accomplish and what the cost would be involved in executing that plan. Then the next step, as I see it, would be to identify, because it costs money, we don't have it, and we'll get into the budget discussion a little bit later, but we're close, close to balance, but that doesn't include paving streets, among other things. So the next, so we'd have to borrow the money, plain and simple. We have to borrow it to go forward to do it. And the next, then after we get our, our plan of what work we're going to do and the cost, then we identify a lender, and we make plans regarding what the cost of the loan would be, the interest rate that we could perhaps get, and a repayment schedule, how quickly or over what period of time can we pay it off, and would like to pay it off. Obviously, we'd like to pay it off as quickly as possible, but that would be a real big total impact on the residents who are paying for it, who are buying a house and paying for it on cash. Some, some places, sometimes, I guess you can do that, but I don't envision that for an extensive street repair program. And having done that, then we'll be up to the core to identify the method of raising the revenue to repay the loan and take the next necessary action to implement that plan. So it comes down to, how are we going to pay for it? Well, there's several ways that we can go about it. First one, which we unsuccessfully tried last year on two occasions, was for a general property tax increase, where it was spelled out that with earmark, $100,000 of the new revenue per year for a street repair program. And of course, that was unsuccessful, and that was in the initial one, where we had, I believe it was $350,000 increase of taxes that we asked for. The second time around, we pared it down to $200,000, $100,000 for the increase in the debt payments that we are now making as of this year, and $100,000 for the streets, and we eliminated trying to raise money to hire that other police officer. But in any event, that's still an option, it's still out there. Trustees, if the board decides they would like to give it a go again for a general property tax increase to earmark X amount of dollars, and that would be something that we can decide how much that needs to be, once we get this plan created, as to what we're going to do and how much it's going to cost. Second option that comes to mind is that the board can do, and we would just, you know, board with the resident input, is to raise the vehicle stickers. And I thought about this one pretty seriously, having gone the referendum route. I understand people don't want to pay money to the government in the form of taxes. I know I don't. But I also know that it's to my advantage to live in a community where I can be proud of it, because it's got things going for it, including nice streets. So, you know, you, we all make our economic opportunity costs. You know, if I've got an extra 150, 200 bucks a year that I can spend on something, what's my opportunity cost? What, what thing is going to be of most valuable, value to me to spend that 150 or 200 dollars? And, you know, streets and street maintenance is going to enhance. We heard, I read the letter, I believe in April, from one of the residents in Acacia, complaining of the, the curbs in front of her house impacting, in her opinion, and probably with certain kernel of truth to it, on her property values. It affects all of us. Property value on a single-family house is going to be decreased necessarily, it's going to affect townhouses and condos and so forth. So the bottom line is, as I see it, is kind of what, we're all in this together, bringing it, whether we live on a residential street that needs repairing, and if we're on a street in a residential neighborhood that right now doesn't need it, someday it will. We've got to help each other out to do it. There are sections of town that, quite frankly, don't need, the Indian Head Park streets, they really don't. They come right out onto a county road or a state road. So, but they have to understand that the property values are affected because the streets aren't there in our town, it affects them. So they're involved, they're in it, they, you know, we've got to look out for each other. And I would hope that that's a widespread feeling in the village. But with respect to the vehicle stickers, we sell about 2,800 stickers per year. There are those who are scofflaws, we don't buy them, but it's another matter for another time on enforcement. For example, if we were to raise the proper, the vehicle stickers from 50 to 85 dollars, we would raise an extra $94,500 per year. We certainly would be able to borrow at least $900,000 right now, if we knew that we're going to have that money coming in next spring, and have the annual payment on the debt. And when I said that we could perhaps get a street program going this fall, that was a concept where I think it would be possible. I think we could get the engineers going, perhaps get a plan, and agree to raise the vehicle stickers next year, and start paying the loan back a year after we borrowed the money. Just for calculation purposes, 2,700 vehicle stickers, if we raised it to $100 apiece, would be an extra $135,000 to the village. And if you want to play with the mental arithmetic, every, obviously, every $10 we raise is another 27,000, based on 2,700 vehicle stickers. Now, of course, then you might be thinking of, well, Mr. Mayor, you just said 2,800, 2,800, why 2,700? Well, I'm thinking that if we raise the rate, there's going to be more people who will try to achieve the system, and there are people who maybe have, have cars, I'll call them, that they, you know, pick it out three or four times a year, because it's a nice vintage automobile, although they not qualify as a vintage car, which gets a special rate. They may sell those, and we can see a drop-off in the number of stickers sold. So I, based on my calculations, I'm 2,700. Obviously, if we doubled it, we have 135,000 per year, and that's at least a million, maybe one, that we could power right now through the streets and pay off in 10 years' time. I don't know if it's possible, but there's something we have to look, maybe we could raise the vehicle sticker and then sunset it for 10 years and say, that way people know it's only that period of time, here's the purpose of spending money. Third, the third option, actually, there's two more. Number three is a, as was done in the late 90s, a street bond referendum, where we actually just, again, develop the plan, we decide how much we want to borrow, and we go to referendum, and we ask the people, are you willing to pay whatever the amount would be additional property tax in order to pay back the street bond for this amount of money? We're going to use that, it's a street bond, it has to go to repair the streets, just like we did. And we could vary the amount of time, I guess, depending on what we think we can do and how much people can afford. Like I said, the last one took, I believe it was 14 years to pay that. So there it is, 14 years later, and we have streets that need to be repaired. So as somebody mentioned to me, you know, it's like, you can, you get it, you fix it, and you pay it off, and as soon as it's paid off, you go through the process. Yeah. And I agree with that, and that's why, one of the reasons I favored the general property tax increase with assurance to the residents that we earmark a certain amount every year of that to the program, is it's an ongoing thing. And then we can take advantage of situations as they arise and have the ability, when there's perhaps matching funds available, which we don't take advantage of right now because we just can't afford our share.
That's no problem.
There's, there's situations out there where there could be an 80/20 split. I, I, we took Blackhawk, we paid debt with stimulus funds, we paid the initial engineering cost, but $400,000 project, that cost us about 20 or 25,000, about a 17 to 1 ratio, one of our dollars for 17 shuttle dollars. I'm aware of other towns who are in better financial shape, one in particular, but they're also home rule committee. And if there's a grant that they can take advantage of, and it requires a match, if the mayor wants, for them not to lose out, they will borrow the money for their part of the match. And of course, being home rule, they can instantly raise a revenue someplace that will help them pay off that loan. But they're players in the big game. We're not, because we're small, but we don't have the resources. So, but anyway, option number three is the street bond referendum, and option number four is we can continue as we are and do nothing about the streets. So that's my comment and my proposal and my opinion, and I would like to open it to the trustees for a discussion regarding going forward with developing a plan to repay the streets and identifying, those are the ways of repaying a loan that we would need to take if that occur to me. Somebody else has another way to raise that revenue, you know, obviously, we're all open here to that. Trustees?
So.
Trustee Alonzo.
Because I had asked Frank, a while ago, he's working on getting me a plan on the streets that were repaired in the 90s, and that, so he's still working on that to give me that information, because I wanted to see what streets were done and what haven't. But I think it's going to be important for us to know a long-term as well as a short-term goal, because our streets are going to be taking place, and that, because that's important to the people. Because if they don't, if they don't have any idea if their street's going to be done in two years, three years, four years, they're not going to work. And that, so I think it's, it's very important that people know what the long-term plan is as well as the short-term plan. I think we also need to look at the water infrastructure too, because we're starting to have problems with the pipes. I think there's, needs to be an overall plan, and that, that we can't just be looking, well, we need the street repaired, because I live in IKEA, and I know our street needs to be repaired, but I want to make sure that we're taking the correct approach, that we're looking at the water as well, because that's going to be major, the water as well as the streets, and see what is the best approach to take.
And nothing we all hate more than having a street get paved one year, and then have the water department pick it up next year, and we're going to do the pipeline. I agree with that 100%. Trustee.
I think early on, when you started, I think you said that you had asked, at or the Public Works to identify the streets that need work. And I think that, what Brenda said, I think we ought to identify all the streets, so that even though we planned to work on these five, or these 10, or these two, that the next ones, we know will have to be addressed in 10 years, or eight years, or 15 years, a street that was just doesn't have the counterinsight of the streets and the forces. But I would call it the infrastructure.
And I think, I, I'm, I'm correct. It's not Ed that would be going out and treats the village engineer that would be...
Yeah, so I said village.
I'm sorry. No, I'm not, I just want to make sure I was clear on it. But my, my thought is, you know, if it's not going to cost us too much, I'd like to have a village engineer go look at every street, tell us what needs to be done to it, and tell us what this is going to cost before we start trying to figure out how we're going to raise the money, because we don't know how much money we need to raise. So I think that's a great first step, if it's not going to set us, set us back a lot of money to have the engineer do that, go around and take that first step.
Well, and I do think, don't they have to do a first step, has to be able to look at that of the appropriate way?
I don't know.
I know Dave Vanderbel is our village engineer, and if we have the engineers who own the streets, is he the one that does it, or does his firm have somebody that, who specializes in the streets, or, you know?
Well, my experience with, when I did the visual inspection, was with Dave Vanderbel out there. It's that firm, Dave is the one that does most of the work, but he can contact somebody else in his office also who would be involved, to the extent that they need to be involved. I certainly would expect that Sam to be involved, and our Public Works trustee, Brian here as well. But initially, I think it's going to take professional input as to, in his trustee interest, that was, look at, I wanted to look at all the streets, and we will see that there's streets that are overdue right now, there's streets that are due, and there might be streets that are not going to be for some time, like Blackhawk just got paved in 2009. It could take a quick look, but quite frankly, I wouldn't want them to waste time looking at it to repay, but it's just been done. That'll be, you know, in that cycle. There's the Ashbrook streets from, I don't know, about 15 years old, 16 years old. America Trail hasn't been repaved in 21 years. There's been other streets probably haven't paved any more, but I'd like to see, you know, everything. Visually, there are some streets in, I would call, good shape, especially if you drive to downtown La Grange, you go through some of those streets, side streets, they're, they're in good shape. Others have areas that definitely need attention, and parts that are fine. So, but my, my, my proposal is, is of a more comprehensive plan. It's not just to pick the top three or four streets and then go forward to do it. My proposal is a village-wide street plan, and deciding what needs to be done, and as trustee Alonzo alluded to, we come up with perhaps a timeframe. I think if we're going to borrow money and do, or do a street bond, I would do as many streets as possible right off the bat, even if marginally some may not be due for the next year or two. I would try to get them done now, because there's an economiescale, bidding a bigger job with the contractor than piece by piece. Let's finish with the trustees.
I was just going to say, if you wanted to, you could go back. We had a program that we, we bought to, along with our engineers, that Sam would probably remember. And if you look back in the minutes, you'd see what it was, and that was really a big help, because we did do all the streets, engineering, but we did have a program for it. Maybe it's still around here someplace.
With regard to, and I'm open-minded to all those options, I really have, you have my mind, which one I would prefer, or which one I thought of. Let me ask you this. With regard to the bond referendum component, when would that, what election would that be on if it was going to be a bond referendum? And when would we have to make a decision?
Well, to move it along, we should put on a general election, the first, the next general election is the primary next year, 2014. Does it end of February or beginning of March?
The primary is January.
So whatever day, I know, I remember one year that had moved that up, it was like February day, but in any event, in 2014 November, we're going to have statewide offices up for the election, just as in 2010, governors racing and so forth. And there will be a primary, and that primary election is the one in the spring, for remark, I believe, and I agree with the council that it's probably March. But that would be the one that we would have to aim for in order to get it going, because if we miss that opportunity, then we have to wait till November.
So with regard to the vehicle sticker, that is something, in theory, we could enact sooner, where the bond referendum would have to wait eight or nine months.
Except for just one, one point. We're currently selling next year's sticker right now, at this year's rate, so although we could enact a vehicle sticker increase almost immediately next month, we're not going to be able to collect that until next, until 2014.
And I think, again, I'm open-minded to all options, but the one advantage to a bond referendum, first of all, it's a tax deductible event for everybody, is compared to paying just the expense, that you don't get a dent from taxes. So there is an advantage to that, and it is a line item that would be on the tax bill as it was previously, and I believe last time, all our current tax bills are $100 less, approximately, because that bond referendum basically, you know, went away.
Paid off and sunsetted. I was looking at that way. Trustee Mitchell.
So a couple of comments. I think, I know you just said it was into the detail, but I don't think every street in the village is equal. Picking my street, Chabona's not as traveled as, say, Blackhawk. So I think there has to be a weighted or number of cars per hour, and I'm not saying we do that study, I've been involved with those, they can be expensive. But if we got down to only being able to do one street, and we have two streets to pick from, there is a, you know, vehicle traffic or some way to weight that. I'm concerned about the idea to increase the sticker price. I believe that we have a fairly high percentage of people who are not paying for stickers today. I've heard estimates in the village from 20 to 40%. If we raise the price, I do not think we will increase the amount of percent of people that are paying. You used the example of people selling cars. I think we just have more people not paying. I don't think our folks would, you know, sell their car for $100. I think whatever we do, we need to have good communication inbound and outbound to the community, they need to be brought in. We have a fairly good-sized crowd here tonight, but it's only 30 or 40 people. If we are doing anything with increasing taxes, or bond, or whatever sticker prices, I think we need to get everybody in, involved, so that they can see the list of streets, how much it costs, how big this problem really is that we have, including the water. The last comment I have at this point is, I think that you listed several options to pay, and you said borrow money, plain and simple. I know I'm new, I know I've only had the budget to look at for three weeks, but I have a way to save money, 78,000 out of the existing draft budget that we have. So that 78,000 could be applied to paying for streets, and saving that money, I've also added LEAK pickup back in. So I think there are other options than going to the community to raise prices.
As I said, those were the options, increasing revenue, that I had come up with on the revenue side, but I was open to other options, including your comments. When we get to the point of figuring out what we want to do, how much we need, how we're going to pay for it, we need to visit that.
But, Mr. President, you said we have to borrow money, plain and simple, and I don't think it's that simple or that plain, personally.
I worked with the budget for several years, trustee, so that's, you know, yeah, that's my opinion right now, but I'm not open to hear other alternatives, as I said.
That's fine. I'll come up with a budget session.
Okay. Trustees, anything else on the street discussion?
So, so what's the process? Are we going to talk about it next month, or what do you, a project?
Right now, I'm going to open it to questions from the audience. Yeah, I would kick, I would kick it over, but we'll, we'll get to there in a minute. I'll entertain any questions or comments about a street, village-wise, repair program. You've heard our comments, so if you have any comments or questions about it, now would be the time to give us your input. I appreciate the air. Please, when I recognize you, say your name and your address.
Yes, John Alonzo, 6309 IKEA Cuck. Two, two things. One, the study you mentioned for the streets, which I agree, there, you know, there needs to be work on the streets. And the study sounds like a good idea to prioritize streets with the idea that some streets, again, may not need work, and you would leave them off the list. But having said that, does that study cost anything? Is this a, a visual inspection, or if you involve an engineer, is there, you know, pre-engineering costs?
I don't know the answer as to how much their cost would be for it. I'm not sure how, you know, how expensive they would, I, I don't know what the engineers need, would need to do. Trustee Whittemore mentioned about doing four samples. Certainly, we'd ask them to run up the bill, if they can take a look at it some other way, but if we get to that point of wanting to go forward with some type of street programs and get a plan going, we talk to the engineers, find the cost, and that would be certainly something that... we talk to the engineers, find the cost, and that would be certainly something that we would have to weigh. But if it turns out, in order to even get the input that we need, that there's a cost involved with it, and we have to figure out if we want to incur that cost and how to pay for it. And if we don't even do that, then obviously, the rest of what I talked about is moot point because we won't get there.
Good, one more. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Putting them on project manager hat. I'm in information technology, but we always do projects. This sounds like a project. It's a street project. But all projects need dates and deadlines and things like that. I'm wondering, obviously, we don't know when we're going to be done, but what's the next step? What's the next date we can look forward to the public can say, oh, on this date or at this meeting, this is going to happen?
A good question, and at this point, I can't say I have an answer because after we hear from the audience, then trustees can talk about it. I would envision that we can continue the discussion about this and get some preliminary information back that we can actually talk about it at the July board meeting.
Sue Kylie, I live on Hennett's Record in Ashbrook. I'm going beyond what you're, however you decide to, to do with streets. They obviously need to be done. Most important reason, I think, is because, it's like you said, it affects all of us. It affects our property values. And we have lots of streets, your property values go down. And I was really disappointed that the referendums didn't pass, or whatever it was. But we're all affected by the economy right now, and we've all been beaten down. And you say government, or you say taxes. And, you know, you can write two pages about why we need streets. But in the second sentence, if you say taxes, tax increase, people are done reading. And I think you've got to approach it when you decide how you're going to do it. Do you want decent streets? We have to pay for them. Make up your mind, you know? Really, make it simple.
Thank you, Ms. Kylie. Mr. Swindell?
Vic Swindell, and I live at 6410 Indian Head Court. I've lived in this village almost 34 years. I used to come to a lot of these board meetings, and I haven't come in a long time. But I'm, I'm sitting here kind of boiling right now, having lived here for 34 years and discovering tonight that we don't have a plan for the redoing of our infrastructure here. And to have it come up and be a surprise tonight is somewhat surprising to me. The village board, presidents, mayors, call yourselves whatever you wish. Your job is to make this village the best thing that we can have with the most harmony that we can have. Can you tell me if you have a list of when the streets were built, when they've been repaired and stuff like that? When I came to the village, the village was described as being 2.5 square miles. Ed, you remember this. It took me a long time to convince people that the village was not 2.5 square miles, that it was barely one square mile. How many roads do we have? How many miles do we have? And in what order were they built? And in what order have they been repaired? Then, once you know what you've got, then you may have a partial plan as to how to solve the problem. The water system, Old Town, if I can refer to it as that. The water system over there is, what, 50 years old? My God. Does it need to be repaired? That ought not be a surprise. Ashbrook's brand new. Why in the world do you need a new street? Come on. We approved buildings of high-rises, and then all of a sudden, we discovered that the roads that were put around them were not up to standard. Well, why aren't they up to standard, or why wasn't, oh, we've got to repair those, or we've got to replace them? Come on, guys, do your job. I don't think you've done your job very well for 30 years. I hate to get up and say this tonight, but you all don't do the basic planning that you ought to do. Once upon a time, we had a planning commission. We ran afoul of the, what was that other board? Zoning Board. Well, we got in conflict because the planning board thought we haven't had a plan. The zoning board thought, well, you don't need a plan. We're the planners. Get your acts together. It's taken 30 years, and we're in as bad a shape today as we were 30 years ago. Rich, you ought not have to sit up there and talk about doing a plan for the streets. The plan ought to already be here. You ought to have done your job and have that plan. You've got a guy sitting here that you call the superintendent of the public works. He ought to get up and tell you how many streets we have and when every one of them was last worked on. And if he can't do that, he's not doing his job. I hate to talk like this. It just breaks my heart to know that I made an investment in this community 34 years ago, and my property value has not increased all that much, when I look around at the other neighborhoods. And it's because the elected officials in this village have not taken a business approach toward running a business. Please, please, please do your jobs. Respond to the needs of the community. Pull this community together. There are roughly what, 4,000 residents in this community? We've got Old Town, we've got 48 acres, we've got Acacia, we've got where you live. We've got the high-rises, we've got the, hey, we're all in the same boat. Let's stop being divisive and let us pull together on the same chain. Compliments, Rich, for recognizing we need a plan to refurbish our streets, to work on our infrastructure. We need it. Some of our retention basins need a little attention, too. I offered to buy the rocks to go in mine to keep some erosion from going on, and I haven't had any responses. Please, pay attention. Otherwise, we're going to fall apart at the seams. Thank you.
Mr. Swindell, I appreciate your comments. I agree with a number of things you have to say. And for your compliment, I'll take credit for only the last six of those 30 years. And for the blame on no plan, I only get the blame for the last six years of those 30 years you're talking about.
I blamed you.
My predecessors.
I spread it around.
Rich, can I just say one comment real fast?
Just one, one second, please. Mr. Swindell, and I don't get away from the board here, so I might follow you back again, if that's okay. You know, my focus has been trying to guide this village through a real tough economic time since 2008. And in my own mind, we've been successful on that. Do we have a plan of the nature? No, we don't, but I would like to go forward with the plan. My concern is, if things mention, and this doesn't mean I'm against it, folks, but we start throwing water main infrastructure. We saw how expensive Cochise was to do roughly 1,900 feet. It was 28, or $280,000. We start throwing water main infrastructure repairs in marginal areas, and I'm not saying some may not need it right now. That was, that Cochise was done because we got the grant from the state, because we identified it and came up with a ballpark estimate way back in 2008, early 2009. And the state said, yep, you can have it, and it took them five years to give us the money. And then it cost a lot. But, you know, we start, we put that along with the street program and try to fix that with the current revenue. It's going to take a lot of money. There are areas of town that need the streets right now. Ashbrook being one of them, whose water system is on the Highlands. So we don't even have to worry about their water system. We just need to take care of their streets. So I personally wouldn't want to hold that up until we figure out what to do with the rest of the infrastructure. Arrowhead Trail has been around since 1978. I think the water system there is probably going to be good for at least another 30 years before you have to worry about it. But the street has been 21 years since it hasn't been fixed, and it needs fixing. So we have to weigh that in. Old Town is Old Town. Those water mains have probably been around since they created a water system. There might be people here who can relate to that. And that, you would want to probably do them both at the same time. I agree with that. Anyway, that, thank you for your comment, and I hear what you have to say about getting, getting our act together, Mr. Swindell.
Ed J. K. Halliak Drive, just one comment, suggestion. And what I want as the village president here, we did pass a bond issue to fix all the streets, the ones that needed it. And we exposed our plan to the village residents, and they voted for it, including people from Acacia, people from Willshire. So we had a plan, Mr. Swindell, and the residents saw it and had.
Wanted to follow through on it.
We did.
Where, where was all the, why are all the streets crumbling now then, Ed?
I don't know. We didn't pick up on what we're supposed to be doing. I don't know.
You were also involved in approving the new, on the corner up here?
Where this lady comes from?
Acacia, yes.
No, 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 no.
Oh, Ashbrook.
How come you let them build streets below standard over there that need to be replaced now? That's a brand-new community.
You were on the plan commission.
I was on the plan commission, but remember, we insisted that that be a high end.
He's going to start picking you up.
I will beat you up. You deserve it.
You two are friends. You're sitting next to each other.
And we're going to stay friends, Rich.
Anybody else have a comment? Mrs. Mattson, please stick your address one time.
John Matt, 6403 Arrowhead Court. I guess mine is just a comment, and I respect that the streets need repair. A lot of streets need repair. But I do think it needs to be a more comprehensive plan that doesn't include solely the streets. If the, if the streets are in that bad of a need, that they will come to the top in a strategic plan of the infrastructure. But you need to look at the water mains and the sewer. And even if you're on an Arrowhead trail, you don't know that a tree hasn't, root hasn't grown for a type. I mean, you know, 30 years is a long time. It should all be reviewed to make sure. Because as you said, it sucks to put in a street and then rip it up the next year. So I really think a strategic plan that looks at all the infrastructure, all the upcoming expenses, and takes all those into account, where you're starting asking for money, is critical.
I agree, and in terms of what the streets, that's where I want to go. And join us this topic so we can get this discussion going. Anybody else?
Diane Andrews, 107th and Trail. I would like to show everybody on the board what I found 18, 20 feet in my front lawn. This is a small sample. Do you know what this is?
I guess it's a road.
This is Arrowhead Trails washing up on my front lawn after it rains. So if you tell me that Arrowhead Trails is not going to get done right after this, we're the, we should be the top line. How many people want to pull this stuff out of their grass? And this is just a small sample. Certain people can't say anything because of who they are in this village that I don't want to spend after it rains for them to pull this stuff up because it's just washing on. It is not even by my curb. It's halfway up my house. It smells when you pick it up.
Thank you, Diane.
Would you like to see?
It's on my yard.
It washes up every time it rains.
Been 21 years since my street was paved, too.
Is there a hand up on this side?
There is.
Oh, okay, I thought I saw one.
Andy Allison, 6317 Kiake. We don't have curbs, so how did I get to talk about curbs? We talk about the street problem, especially now since we've been getting a kind of deluge of rain from 6317 to about four or five houses to the south. Kiake is a lake, and the lake extends into the front yards, into the side yards, and into the backyards. And it continues. The grading is so terrible there. There is no road left, complete. I think you can verify that with Ed because of the fact that they came out with the engineer a year ago, and he said, well, the grading is just not right here. The water is running, instead of running to the corners, it's running to the center of the block. So every time we do have rain, we have a flood, we have a swimming pool, and of course, everything else that comes along with it that gets flowed in from the streets comes into our yards continuously.
That certainly would be something that if we were doing a street program and looking at fixing the street, the grading would also have to be taken into consideration. Depending, again, depending on the workload, but I went down to your folks, so I kind of have an idea of what we're talking about. So if it was a valid, important sort of, rest of it, sort of. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, we're not going to finalize a plan or any of this, this discussion going, but any last, my intent here would be to go forward and get some input from the village engineers to what it would take or cost to go forward and study the streets of the village to get together. Any last, any comments of the trustees? Anybody have a comment from the, in perspective of what the trustees, the residents have to say from the trustees?
I would just, I agree. I think the first thing we need to do is talk to the engineer, find out what it's going to cost for him to go out and look. I agree, we need a plan. I agree with what I was saying. We've got to find out what it's going to cost us to get the ball rolling and figure out how we're going to pay for that initial, initial fee that we're going to have, and find out what it'll cost, check out the water system, the water mains. Find out what he's going to charge us to do all this, so then we'll be, we'll know what we're looking at just from the start to get this plan up and running and figure out how we're going to pay for that initial, initial fee.
Yes, I'd like to reply to Ms. Andrews that I'm the new guy, and I realize we need a plan, and so I'm going to work to get a plan. Rich, earlier you said that if we add the water system, you know, we can spend a lot of money if we do all the water replacement. I don't think anybody said that. I think that we have to keep in mind the water system so that in five years, we're not saying, oh, my gosh, all the water systems are now breaking, you know, too bad we didn't plan for that. So I think when we look at the roads, it's easy to see a road that needs work. The water system's a little harder, but some may need work and some may not. But knowing if Old Town needs to be done in the next 20 years, and if that one was so expensive, and if all of Old Town's going to be 10 times that amount, just pulling a number out of the air, then that's a pretty big problem that we as a village are going to have to address in the next 10 years, 20 years, whatever the engineer says. I would, I think in the budget, we had $2,000 for a new software for the streets, the phaser, is that right? So this is the program that tracks street health, kind of?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well, that's good to see that we have that. And then lastly, for me, I'd be happy to volunteer to work on a committee or group to get into the details, set some milestones, some dates, to try to work through this. Because if we have a March deadline or whatever it is, that will be here soon.
Trustee Whittemore and myself are the first and second on the public works department. And I know that you both are aware, Frank and yourself, that we intend to have a meeting soon to sit down with Ed and Frank and everybody to start getting the ball rolling and all this, of getting a plan, a short-term, long-term plan, et cetera.
And I think it would be our vision to try to put together a, I would call it a preliminary peek-in-the-box plan, meaning that we wouldn't have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, but to try to ascertain in a list form what are the most critical items that are number one, and the team say these are high priority life safety issues, then we will have them prioritized. And then once we get that list, then we'll have to get into the minutia of what the details are, the costs, and then figure out if we can do an engineering study or not. So there might be things that are very, very important, critical in the sewer or water area that don't apply to the whole village. And we have to realize that as well. The Highland Sanitary District provides services for... The Highland Sanitary District provides services for one quarter of the village, I believe, approximately, and three quarters of the village is through the Indian Head Park Water Department. So we have to handle that differently from what I mentioned back as well, which is different than if it would apply to the whole village, which would be the streets as well. So Brian and I will attempt to do that very quickly with Frank, and hope to have something for the next meeting.
That's what I was going to say, Ed. You know, it makes sense to me that since Brian is public works and you're the second for public works, then you can kind of take the, take the ball, run with it initially and get that preliminary information from the engineer just as to how long it will take, how much it will cost, and we'll continue this discussion at the July board meeting. Okay. All right, that closed the discussion on agenda item number one. We move to number two. Number two is a resolution, to put segue the street discussion into number two. It's a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Township Alliance regarding sixty-fifth street maintenance. There's the, lots of here, so it's, here's the background in a nutshell. Sometime late last summer, early fall, trustee Burmier, then trustee Burmier, asked me if there was anything that could be done to contact the township to get sixty-fifth street paid. For the purpose of identification, when I refer to sixty-fifth street, I'm talking about sixty-fifth street west of Willow Springs Road. It's the second street north from the Walgreens. It runs the width of, it runs the length of a good sized lot over there. It's, I wouldn't even call it a quarter of a block, block long, but it's about that. I contacted the county, probably, because I think my, my last recollection was about end of October, and asked if they had done a street.